Hi, I'm John Martin with Park Without Reverse. I'm here at Off the Square Artisans with owner Holly Hanum. Holly, last Saturday, June the 10th, we had a sign up to give away $100 in grocery money. You want to help me draw a winner?
Absolutely.
Before we do that, tell me a little bit about your store.
Okay, so we are located at 205 East High Street in Rockville, just a block off of the square. We are a store that offers handcrafted items only. We have over 40 artists here. We have photography and blacksmithing and ceramics and botanicals and woodworking and jewelry, but it is all handcrafted by local artists. Our hours are 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Wednesday through Saturday, and then Sundays, we're open 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Want to give away some groceries?
Absolutely.
Let's pick a winner.
All right. Mix them all up here. All right, here we go.
Here's our winner.
So the winner is Carl Jones of Rockville.
Carl Jones, congratulations Carl. I'll be getting ahold of you on this next week. Thanks for everyone that signed up, and you've shifted into Park Without Reverse.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I've got a couple of thank you's I'm gonna put out to the public. One, donation to the police department's cages in their cars. Main Street and Aunt Patty, Bloomfields, TJ Terrell State Farm, Kathy Preston have all donated to that. Appreciate that. I know you guys do. Miller Pipeline also donated some cones for, it slips my mind what's...
Evoc.
Evoc, yes. Evoc cream, so appreciate that. Hopefully we'll have some more cones, so. DJ and Lynn Brubeck donated a stone to us. Chris and Jamie Widdemire also donated some stones to us, or be large stones. And I would like to thank Michelle Foner for all her work in the police department, the cages, and everything she's doing for you guys, so. And Kevin, I'd like to thank you for the cemetery work. Appreciate it. It's made, hopefully, a smooth transition with everything that's going on, so.
Mark is, the guy stepped up the plate and got a lot done.
It looks good out there. A lot of grades have been...
I believe 109.
I appreciate that. I'm sure Roger does, too. He stopped by my shop Sunday and said, "Thank you, guys," and he appreciated everything he did, so. So, other than that, ready? Are you ready to go?
I'm ready. First item I have is claims in the amount of 814, 250, 181.
I'll make a motion to approve, but in honor of Park's absence, these are a little larger than normal, so I think you have some info.
Why don't you recap that for me? There is a claim in there. Our power purchase was $230,000. We did have a sludge removal for the wastewater plant that was almost $15,000, but an OAKR payment of almost $52,000. And then we did make a reimbursable payment to ISI, which is doing the construction work on the 41 North project, and that claim was just under $300,000. So, aside from that and payroll, it totaled 814, 250, 181.
I second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
I do have the June 5 minutes for approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
So the square up fees for the pool for the month of May, if you recall, these are the credit card fees because we do take part of the pool, so the town is absorbing those costs. For the total month of May, we have $44.70 for square fees.
Motion to approve.
Whoa, I want to ask, I have a question. Is that for the concession stand and the pool entry fees?
No, because we're not reporting anything on concession, so we're only doing a square report just on admissions. So, yeah, just admissions.
So she has a separate...
I think she does.
Cashiers.
I don't know if it's square on that or not, but I can check to see what they're using on that.
But we're sure this is not, we're not paying fees on the concession. Okay, thank you.
Was there a second on that?
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I've been kind of working on the cemetery rules and regulations for Memory Garden. Actually, talked about some of those fees being increased as well. I do have an ordinance that would be 2023-09. Basically, it is just kind of an amendment to the ordinance from 2000. There's 2016, 2008, and 2012 ordinance. The fee schedule is just...
But is it $10 per...
Across the board? Was that what Mark said?
$10. I can't quote right now. Was it $100 here, $100 there? Some things went from $300 to $400.
Yeah, it was basically like, for instance, the grave plots in section A through H shall be as follow, like Rockville residents, which non-residents are the same thing. I think they were 500 before. They're going to be 600. And I think I need to publish this and not apply for 30 days, or is that correct?
Yep, one time in the next 30 days.
Okay. And then becomes effective, though, after that publication or effective now?
After publication.
Okay.
Anything that involves fees requires that.
Immediately after the publication or just 30 days?
30 days.
Okay. So we're looking at August probably, before those will take effect, but that will be in the newspaper. Kevin, did you have any comments on any of the maybe rules and regulations that we're going to change or vary?
Basically, what we did was kind of go through there. It's really tough to, what the rules state and what is actually enforced are sometimes two of things. You know, one Shepherd Hook, that's obviously not being enforced now, but as we go, we try to clean things up, trying to limit the decorations, so we don't have, you know, 10 Maxx box cars on the tombstones. Bringing some of the, for example, the rule said no mausoleums or raised tombstones. Well, now it says with the exception of the Rockville. So we kind of made things, cleaned up a little bit. I did it. Mark was the last person to come edit the rules, so we had a final, final copy. There's not a whole lot of changes in there. The drain holes that were allowed in the boxes are no longer allowed. They can have concrete boxes, but they don't have to be fancy, but they can't have drain hole anymore. So that's a rule change from 2012 or something like that. So, but nothing really big. It's mostly about decorations, maintenance, grave blankets, seasonal grave blankets, we treat it like fresh flowers. You know, once they're dead, we're gonna take them off. It did say from November to April, that's a long time to have a wreath on Shepherd Hook, a live one, so, just things like that. So I would encourage you all to just get a copy off of Brandy's, kind of read through them if you've got any concerns to, let us know.
And we talked about, you and I talked about making maybe a pamphlet. Even if it's not in pamphlet form, I can make copies.
It'll be mailed to people who apply.
But if anybody has any questions or anything, obviously, that'll be in the newspaper published, but they can always call and request.
And Mamie didn't type everything into the computer, so it wasn't available, so she re-typed everything from scratch, so it can be amended and edited at will.
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
I have a resolution for the board. You guys have previously given the RPD permission to exchange Leslieville shotgun for a vehicle cage for their car, so this is just a resolution that formalizes that. It's Resolution 2023-07. Just a vote, well, actually, you guys already voted to do it, so just need Dave's signature and Brandy to attest it then.
Well, that's easy enough.
Just authorize Bill to carry out what that vote was, is what the resolution does. As far as ordinance violations, our next ordinance violation day in court is July 11th at 1:30. We have nine set that day. We also have July 18th some set that day, and then September 5th are our next days for ordinance violations in court. That's everything I have.
Okay. Did we get a bill submitted?
Four.
Damages?
Four. Sewer.
Basement.
Oh. Oh. This was the complete packet that I had submitted to offer review, but there's actually several different, there's a few different estimates in there, and then it appears from the letter, the cover letter, that there could possibly be estimates that aren't submitted, so I do not have any more information than what you're, what you received from the original stuff.
Are you guys all up to speed on this?
So has there been a lawsuit or a claim filed with our insurance or anything?
No, not to my knowledge, and I haven't filed anything on it, and you obviously have all. Whatever the next step is that you want me to take, I will.
Have we made a determination whose side it was on? Was it one?
We do have a backup down west of it.
So is this a sewer that's connected to our sewer, or what is this?
It's his main coming to ours, and our main did back up on like the 23rd of March, I think it was. But where they come up through the, he calls the damage, was storm drain or...
So it's a storm drain that caused it?
It's not a storm drain, it's a basement drain.
Which they're not supposed to...
So it's not, it's not their actual sewer, it's their basement drain that's hooked to it?
Their basement or garage.
And they're not allowed to do that? We have an ordinance that prohibits hooking your basement drain to the sanitary sewer and for this reason. So, yeah, I mean, and actually, when they passed that ordinance, they made it such that if you have a private sewer disposal system, which was installed prior to the public sewers, you're supposed to disconnect any type of storm drain from that system, under our ordinance that was passed in '96. So, you know, unless it's actually the sewer itself, you know, we wouldn't be liable for the storm drain. They're not supposed to be hooked to our sewer. It's actually a violation of our ordinances, so. I don't know. I guess I could talk to whoever it was if they wanted to, but, you know, generally, if it's anything that would be litigation related, I wouldn't do that in a public meeting, so.
The only same issue, because I have a bathroom in my basement, so consequently, that line that actually has drains in it is actually a sewer line.
Right, that's different than a...
And I spent about 40 grand over the years getting that fixed from the town's backup coming into my basement, so if we're gonna start paying bills, I'd like that one to happen.
Well, so sewers are meant to be for sewage, they're not meant to be for storm water or rainwater.
But I'm on your side, David, because that's what happened. The storm water infiltrates the sewers on Jackson Street and was five feet deep in my basement, and I spent tens of thousands of dollars over the years correcting it.
Right. And those are all supposed to be, you know, if, sewer is different than that, so if you have your storm water or your regular drain hooked into your sewer, you're in violation of the code in the town of Rockville, so.
The house was built in 1952, so I can't...
But yours is a bathroom, though, it sounds like. That's different than...
The sewer line, but the sewer line has two drains in the basement that ran into it. It's all been corrected since, but the finished basement's been flooded like four times, the tens of thousands of dollars.
Right, it'd be different if it's coming up out of a toilet, I guess.
Coming out of a toilet, out of a shower drain?
Well, in your instance, but if it's just coming up the storm water drain, you know, or just a drain that happens to be hooked in, they're really supposed to disconnect those to stop something from like this from happening. It also floods our sewer, so that the capacity down at the plants affected by it, too. If you remember, and this is before I was the attorney, but they'd actually did some smoke testing to try to find people that had been connecting to it and tell them they had to stop, but that was prior to me being here, so I'm not sure the exact date they did that. But, yeah, it's a violation of the ordinance for them to have their basement drain hooked in, unless it's a sewer drain.
Could I just have that back, and then we could talk further?
I mean, if they want to talk to me, they can.
Ice coats, and then I'd be happy to call them.
Yeah, that's fine. And if they want to talk to me, they can, but I did print out the ordinances on that, so I have them. My printer's got something wrong with it, so I can get better copies, but...
Paul, I can just get the... Numbers that you're referring to?
The circle parts, what is the relevant part, not the yellow part. The yellow part's the printer malfunction, so.
I like this one.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, so if anybody out there has their drains hooked to the sewer, you need to have them unhooked from the sewer in that capacity, unless it's actual sewer water that's going in there, so. Storm water should not be going into the sanitary sewer or flooded basement water. But, yeah, if it were coming up through the toilet, maybe, or something like that, it'd be different, but...
All right.
At least that's my view of it.
Good.
We have three, or four patrol cars. We're expecting to get the fourth one this week.
Can anybody drive one?
I'm sorry?
Can anybody drive?
We're driving them now. We're waiting on the decals, we're waiting on, we're waiting on estimates and the artwork so that we can have those all put on at the same time. And we also need to replace the ones on the Tahos and the pool cars so that they all match and that we're consistent and we're not looking like two different, divided departments. I'd also like to approach the SEC and ask for a grant for drug test kits, if that's okay with you.
I believe so.
I sent an email to Nelson's inquiring if our balance was zero. They sent one back saying that our balance is zero, so we're not using those anymore. That should be a dead issue from this point on. I'd like to, once again, say thank you to Main Street, Aunt Patty's, Bloomfield State Farm, and Miller Pipeline for their donations, and also I'd like to thank Main Street, they're gonna have a block party, and they've invited us to do the dump tank, and proceed to go to purchasing the cell transform system.
Who's the first one in the dump tank? You?
Probably.
Quince's?
That was your chance.
July 20th.
Is everybody in the department in?
The county attorney.
You need a longer line.
I'm sure we'll all be there, too.
That's all I have.
All right, well, I appreciate it. Doug?
Well, we had cleanup day. It went very well, and I'd like to take a moment to thank Ian from the police department. He was there all morning with us, along with Alex Ryan from the fire department. They come over and they were tremendous help. We were steady, steady all three hours and filled all four dumpsters, so it was a successful day. And then, I don't know how many of you heard me talking to Dave earlier, the Veterans Memorial that's been proposed for the park, we went down today, soils, and we've laid that out, painted it white, so you got time after the meeting or next of a day to see actually the way it's gonna be laid out.
When's the good start in that?
Well, he's getting bids. Actually, the guy that laid it out is gonna give some bids, and we're going down in the morning, Electric Department, to see what materials they need to run from that one pole to within light, all seven flags, and so we'll be figuring out it tomorrow or looking and get, so we can move on, as long as he wants to.
The park board did make the recommendation that we do forward with it.
I think the location's a great, great location down there.
Yeah, it'd seem amazing when you get down there and actually see it laid out. It kind of gives you chills, really, to see, it's gonna be a great addition to the park.
And the hope is that it will be dedicated on Veterans Day next year during the bicentennial?
Yeah. It's worth trying, I'd just take a look even laid out like that. So, just real quick, we've been able to do some patching, several roads, and then Electric's been working on transformers. They got the metering for the parking lots all hooked up. We're just ready to move on with any time of the electric and get specs on the holes and stuff so we can go ahead and run the power and get all that going. Water Department's been busy with a lot of, they've had several water leaks, been working on water taps. We've got another water tap, and this week, along with a leak, so they've been pretty busy and everything, and like I said, we've been doing a lot of cutting. We've had them going around, cutting a lot of streets back, because everybody's been down Anderson Street, and we've started getting that all back so the public can see backing out and everything, so they've been pretty busy with that. And the lagoon, they're hanging, has been sprayed, those bars all been sprayed, I think everything's been sprayed at least once. We did have, now, with the sprayer, the pump went out, and it was $800 or $160 for a kit. We was able to rebuild it, $160. The bucket truck that we got tires for, we ended up going to NKP at $2,400, but they couldn't line it up, so Burke's lined it up and had to put two bulbs that we'd seen for around, I think it was $700, so it's all done and back, and they said it does drive quite a bit different, so that truck's complete. So, so if I got any questions on that before I move on to... All right, as you saw, I put some stuff in your mailbox, so as you can see, the front page on that is for the mausoleum. I contacted Andy Willhite, he's got a buddy that works on them, and I asked him to come up with a price to fix that and make it safe again, and between him and his buddy, they've come up with $16,685.39. They would do that on weekends and everything, and they would take care of it, all have stainless steel corners, brackets on the bottom to hold it in once it's in, and the guy will do some concrete work and do some tuck pointing, and it's all done, so.
That's considerably cheaper than our last...
Exactly, so, yep. So, I think the cemetery board's already approved, you can go ahead and do it if you guys would approve.
I'll bank the motion. Second.
Paul in favor?
And then, next is the building we've been talking about out there. We got three quotes from the three people that we have, as you can see the price and everything on it. The cemetery board has voted to go with A1 Construction at $9,350. Park's not here, but I did call him and talk to him. That was under the guideline to have it done in 60 days, and Sean's schedule won't allow that, but he said he could have it in 90, and Park said he's okay if we want to extend it to 90 to save the $5,000, so. They're all there if you guys would like to look at them or whatever.
Sounds good to me. You guys want to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, the only other thing, it's a cemetery I have.
Hydrants?
Hydrants, yes, they just had mine.
You may have mine.
So I give you hydrants. They're wanting to, Camden went through there, and most of the old section, they're extremely old, hard to work, so I got a price of eight hydrants to corn mane, and they were the lowest at $1,160, and utility came in at $1,315, so they went with corn mane at $1,160. You guys...
Are those Woodford's?
Yes, Woodford's, yes, exactly.
Has to be a motion in under $2,500. I don't know that the cemetery has, do we have to approve that?
Do what?
Do we have to approve that? It's under $2,500.
Well, I don't think you really have to approve them, but I had it, and that's what they, I mean, I can approve that.
It's not like it's under your threshold.
Yes.
I mean, if you want approval, we can do it.
You don't really, I just kind of let you guys know what's, everything, so. And then, moving on to the electric, they've got a bunch of stuff, so. They got a, Ellie, do you like kits?
Lee two, is that under your limit, too? Park mentioned the limit two.
No, it's, that's $9,000.
Yeah, I think you...
My one is 20.
I think you wanted us to do that, too.
Oh, with the...
About cemetery?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
We already did it.
You approved that.
All right.
Okay?
No.
All right, back to the electric. Got it.
Oh, that one's A1.
The damaged light holes down 41, two of them are under, will be insurance claims, and then one we'd have to pay for, it was tore up, it's no damage, snow, and there was no report of it, but those will be $31,282. You gotta have the approval so we can go ahead and get an order, but I believe two of them will be, the $20,806 will be insurance.
Right, so those are 10 grain a piece. And they don't want us very... I'll make a motion.
Paul in favor?
All right.
Then, the kits for the lights down on 41 that we're converting over, the incandescent bulbs, they're going over to LEDs. They've used the kits they've had, they'd like to work four more, and four of them were at $2,545, $48.
I'll bank the assessment.
Paul in favor?
And, these are just meters, test meters, I can go ahead and do that, it's just $1,000. And then the other thing they have is just connectors, plugs, and just day-to-day stuff that they need to keep their truck stocked and everything, and that's coming in at $3,314.75.
Make a motion.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Double check before I say anything, shit to it on all the... Yep, that's all I have. If anybody have any questions?
What was the, what was the answer on the individual meters that people could purchase?
Well, after I talked to a couple of people, we've got that water project that we're going to be beginning pretty soon, so we're gonna be in a similar situation like Monizuma was, where they did a particular larger project and have these meters available, so that's why they were able to sell them at a reasonable cost. I mean, our, the new meters that are going in are about $1,200 a piece, so we're gonna maybe wait and continue that conversation, and maybe that could be an option for next year to offer people before springtime, and then, you know, we can talk about it, see how many meters, I think they're 70 being replaced.
So it's not like some $50 meter that we can go and get, it's not that?
No, it's actually a water meter that they've converted over, then they bring the reading in.
Yeah, but if we have them, you know, within the project when we're finished, I think we should have maybe close to 70 if they're all in working order, then we could revisit that conversation and maybe be able to offer that to the public and...
Because we kind of need to discuss minimum, too, definitely, before...
Yeah, I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding that maybe a customer thought if they're not using minimum, they still thought they were gonna get a discount if they watered and still were within minimum, and tried to explain that you're still gonna pay your minimum. If you're only using 1,000 gallons and you use another 1,000 to water, you're not getting a cost savings on that, so, there's gonna be some research and...
So it's basically canceled until next year?
Yes, yes.
Well, is that it, Doug?
Yeah, that's all I've got. If you have any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a statement. Wanted to thank you for the square. I was told today that the square hasn't looked this good in a long time, so wanted to move that on to you and compliment whoever's taking care of it.
There's three or four of the guys down there have been taking care of it. We got a little bit more painting to do, and of course, we'll get it swept for the street market this weekend, so it looks, it does look good, I mean, drive through there, it does, so, but thank you.
Appreciate it. Roy, you have anything from you, Matt?
I don't have a question.
Okay.
Do you want to do, you know, some, you know, Sandy gave her a copy since she was here for that.
Okay. Which one of you guys wanted? Ian or Sandy wanted?
If you, I just thought, since you were here, if you wanted to mention Burke Street Market, I told you earlier today, I'd like to make sure I announce that, but that's this weekend, which is the 24th. I didn't write the date down, but if you have anything to add on there, we talked about the street closures, which will be the Jefferson High End Market, street bordering, the courthouse... End Market, street bordering the courthouse, basically. But if you had anything to add for the event that you'd like to say?
Doug is awesome. He put our signs up. I just called and he said I want them on. He's straightened it up a couple of times, so kudos to you and your guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything to add?
Yeah. In 1896, there was a quintuple homicide in Rockville. Sheriff Mull and Deputy Sleman, in the process of attempting to apprehend that homicide suspect, were murdered near the intersection of US Highway 36 and Market Street. I would ask the council to entertain a motion to make that intersection a memorial way for that deputy and the sheriff, and signage to reflect that.
Okay. Anybody having an issue with that? Somebody want to make a motion on it?
I'll make that motion, and I believe the signage you are wanting it to be brown for the sheriff's department?
Yes.
One second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
And just so we're clear, we're not changing the street names.
No, no, no.
Just, you know, making it a memorial, so. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Brandy, you going to go over the progress?
Yeah, I'll just do it real quick, and we can be finished up. The paving, if, I don't know if Doug has anything to add on the North Michigan, but that was done on June 14th.
That's good.
So I think that's all a completed project, and sidewalk ADA grants there at the corners. The Anderson Walton Howard, that's been awarded and sent out for publication, so we are taking bids on that up until our meeting time of June 17th, or July 17th at 5 o'clock. We did have a pre-con meeting for that particular one this morning, and there'll be a pre-con meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock for the Jackson Jax parking, if there's any interested participants in that. South Market, I would like to say there's been a lot of conversation. I had several phone calls last week because of the signage being placed up there, saying the road was going to be closed on or June 19th or thereafter. I finally was able to talk to our engineer, project supervisor, as well as the contractor. Nothing's going to be done at all until after July 4th. So if that uses a lot of people's mind, customers, residents that live on Market Street, nothing until July 4th. And the engineer assured me that the contractor should be in close communication so that we can actually advertise, not only here, but he said a lot of times they'll do a letter or a notice, and we'll put them on the doors, just all residents down Market, so that they're aware too. So that's kind of a follow-up on that. Nothing to be alarmed until after 4th of July, and that'll all be... I noticed they're putting a bunch of signage out today, too. 41 North, I don't really have a progress report, but everything seems to be going fine. I think we only have one more invoice to be paid, and that's being reimbursed. The water line inventory, we were awarded the application for the $15,000, so I would like to thank, I know Troy's not here, but with UMac, I was very thankful that he mentioned that, and one, and then he helped me out with that application, so I appreciate him for that. Bid packets for Jackson Jax, that's the same one. We'll be taking those until July 17th, meeting date at 5 o'clock. Please mark out my June 22nd notice, date of announcement. That was a typo in my, for the Ocre. The next meeting that Cindy's available at, if she has any updated information moving forward on the water grant, she can talk about it. Bike and Pedal, we signed that resolution last meeting, and then we'll have to apply in October for the comp plan grant for that again. Strawberry Lift Station, everything's taken care of. The prison, I got in contact with the state and applied for that application, so that'll be paid for. And I think we're expecting that maybe at the end of the year, right? December?
Good deal.
November? That was about $200,000, or we were, we were awarded $200,000 to pay for that compactor. So that's all the updates I have on that one.
Okay, thank you. They have any old business they want us to talk about? Any new business? Any public comment?
In regards to Market Street, the project?
Yes.
Do you know how long that project is going to, or how long it's going to be closed on Market Street?
They did not give me any kind of a timeframe, and I think it's, I believe they're going to start probably at the south end, work their way, you know, toward this area. But they haven't even begun to bring in equipment, materials, so they're...
That's with the new sewer and water and everything, that one.
Yes. But like I said, I talked to the engineer today. I know anybody that that affects, anything, communication that he brings, feel free to call the office if you are, have any questions about it, and I'll definitely update you as they update me.
But they did say no real demo till after the festival as well, didn't they?
On Square.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was, yeah, that was a big concern.
I think once it starts, the project will last about a year and a half.
And Sandy had a good point that she commented to me today about hometown holidays. I know they were all talking about Rich Festival, but no one really mentioned hometown holidays. So that is something that I'll just mention to them as well, as far as the square being affected. I, I really don't see the square being affected till probably springtime, if that. They're going to do a lot of work on the south end first.
No, I'm not in charge of that. I'm just...
Well, yeah, but it was an event that I was glad you mentioned, so, yeah, but...
Yes.
Would it be possible to obtain some of the bricks to be removed from the street?
Yeah, we, we plan on salvaging as, as many as we can, so.
We're, have the house there on the square, and if we could use some on that property, I think it'd be great for the history.
Yeah, there's something in the works there. I don't, we haven't really nailed it down yet, but, but we're talking about it. So, the same company that did Jefferson Streets doing South Market, so those guys did a really good job. Finished on time, and just thought they did a really good job. So, anybody else?
Can I ask something about, you know, Mark always had that blocked off there on Market Street, and I don't think he's having that gathering that he usually has this year. We haven't heard anything about it. So if we, we can go down that street to take people to the parking lot. We don't need it blocked off particularly. We don't need it blocked off at all. I just wonder if we can go that route, if we need to go down Market Street to get to the parking lot.
Honestly, I don't know, Sandy. I, I mean, if he hasn't...
He hasn't requested any street closures.
Well, I think Lance had another venue this weekend with her little shop, and I think maybe that's why it was not there.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're talking about this weekend, correct?
Yeah.
What, what, yeah, there's no...
He used to come with an event schedule, and they would block off, you know, that section. I think is what she was concerned about, is if he has, has anything.
And the fact that he doesn't listen to me, that I'm just...
Not true.
Do we need to separate you?
I've already threatened.
You're trouble.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.